All right, I'm gonna call to order this meeting on the 4th of November 2021. City of Nashua. Sorry, City of Nashua Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper. Alderman David Tenza. Alderwoman Jan Schmidt. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch. Mark Mayen. And we have a quorum.
Okay, thanks. So first up on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. So we do have in our packet for the board, the minutes from the October 21st, 2021 meeting. Anybody in the board had a chance to take a look at these minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or require amendment? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Nashville City Planning Board minutes of October 21st, 2021, as written.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve the 21st of October, 2021 meeting minutes. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that motion passes. Next up, we have Communications.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the planning board. Two items came in since your packets were mailed. Case 821-226 and 227 dated November 3rd, 2021 from Gene Porter, representing Nashville Environment and Energy Committee concerning alternative energy choices for the Public Works Building. Number two, case 821-0219 and 220, letter dated November 3rd, 2021 from Tom LaCqua, Staff Engineer, City of Nashua, responses to 25 East Otterston Street Engineering comments. That's it.
Okay, thanks a lot. I don't know that we have any reports from myself or any of the committee liaisons. Anybody have anything? No? Okay. All right, so moving on with the agenda, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting for everybody either online or in the audience here. So essentially, after each legal notice or conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and a description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant questions of the applicant or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. I'll first ask for anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concern for the plan to speak. If you so choose, if you're in person here, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Same goes for online, you'll unmute and state your name and address for the record. That'll be your time to express any concerns or ask questions regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for any testimony from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. Same procedure there, and then the board will again ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given an opportunity, or in a rebuttal period, at which time they'll speak to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject in hand and not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on our testimony presented and considering all the applicable approval criteria established in our Nashville revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I'll thank everybody again for your interest and courteous attention. Ask that if you do have a cellphone that you put on silent, if you're here, and if you are listening online, please keep yourself on mute until you want to speak, if so, during the public part of the hearing, so. All right, that being said, first up on the agenda, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there remains 821-0177. This particular item on the agenda is tabled until our December 2nd meeting still. That's accurate?
Correct.
Okay, so we won't be hearing that tonight. Old business site plans, there are none. Next up, new business conditional special use permit. First, this is case 821-0227, City of Nashua owner. This is an application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to construct a new 25,700 square foot Division of Public Works office building. This is located at 840 to 842 and 846 and 848 in L. West Hollis Street. We're gonna actually, you know, hear this case in conjunction, or at the same time, with the associated new business site plan, which is case 821-0226, same owner, same location. So first up, for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at case 821-0227, the conditional special use permit for the city? You want to make a motion as to whether that application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a recommendation to accept jurisdiction over our new business, case number 821-0227, City of Nashua.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of 821-0227. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. That case is in jurisdiction. And now regarding 821-0226 site plan, have a motion as to whether that's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a recommendation to accept jurisdiction over new business site plan, case number 821-0226.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to take jurisdiction of 821-0226. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. That site plan is in jurisdiction as well. Okay, do we have somebody from the applicant who wants to come up? And you can go ahead and just go right through the conditional special use permit and right into the site plan.
Sure.
We'll ask questions sort of after both presentations.
So my name is Bill Davidson from Hoyle Tanner, here representing the City of Nashua for the new DPW office building, administration building. Also, online, we have Janice Lamenda, who is HKT Architects, if there's any building questions, and Marisa Di Biasso, we work together at Hoyle Tanner on the engineering. So I think everybody's got their packages and are pretty familiar with this site. This is the Four Hills landfill site. There's D-54, which is Four Hills, and then if everybody's looking at their packet, C-6 is probably the best plan to be looking at, at least for this overview. The other three lots that are there are D-84, 85, and 86. So total out of those four lots, it's just under 300 acres in size, and we'll be utilizing for the DPW office building, the front portion next to West Hollis. We're gonna have a new driveway that comes off of West Hollis that's south of the existing Four Hills landfill that comes into the building. I think it was mentioned that that building's 25,700 square feet. It's a two-story building. There's associated parking with that, that we have some waivers. I believe everybody's seen what those waivers are. If you'd like, I could go through each one of those.
If you can just summarize the waivers you're requesting and sort of why? To start with the conditional use permit, actually, it doesn't look like there's any waivers on that. It's only on the site plan, right?
All right, so why don't I just keep going a little bit with the
Yeah, go ahead.
...review, and then we'll get into the site plan.
That's fine, yep.
So on the plan, comes in, there's parking for the site, there's an existing firefighting facility that's in the southern portion of our project area, that's gonna remain there. The site is serviced by municipal water and sewer, we'll be tying into that. And then the site has been designed to have both closed and open drainage for that. There are sidewalks in the location of the building, lighting for those parking spaces and building, as well as a landscaping plan. Once we get into the project a little bit more, on the back of your package, there's some architectural plans that show a rendering of what the building looks like, as well as a floor plan for the first and second floor. If you'd like, I could go through the waivers and explain those a little bit.
Sure, that would be great, please.
Sure. So this zoning is R-30. We're asking for some waivers, 190, 172, which is non-residential building. This building is more than 500 feet off of West Hollis, and we've tried to keep as much of a visual buffer that we can with existing trees, as well as landscaping on that. 190, 198, which is number of off-street parking spaces. We do have more spaces than are required per your regulations. There is some discussions right now about removing the southern portion of the parking in that area, so that's still to be decided, but it shouldn't really affect what we're talking about tonight.
What is the reason why you're asking for more parking, though?
That we were asking for more parking was that the DPW was looking to have and be able to accommodate the vast majority of their employees if they held meetings and things like that. So it was important at the time to have as many parking spaces as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Let's see, 190, 271E, a plan delineating the proposed use and the uses on abutting lots and parcels. We asked for a waiver on this due to the size and the size of the property. I think I said it was 300 acres. There's various abutters around it, so it was difficult to show that. 190, 271F, location of all permanent monuments, property lines, bearings, street lines, lot line, existing easements. Again, this is 300 acres in size, very difficult to have a property boundary of this site. We know where it is, it's the landfill site. 190, 279, the design review shall be drawn reproduced on two sheets in a 22-inch by 34-inch format. That's a typical engineering format, either 22 by 34 or 24 by 36. In this case, it's part of an architectural plan set, which is a much larger, turns out to be a 30 by 42, so we're asking for a waiver on that. 190, 279E, again, this refers to the permanent monuments that I just talked about with the large size of the lot. 190, 279F, the dimensions and square footage of all the buildings and structures on site. This existing site, being the landfill, has a number of buildings on it that would be difficult to show, and we're just dealing with the front portion of the property.
Okay.
And then 190, 279EE, a plan sheet of existing conditions on the site and adjacent parcels as appropriate. Again, with the large site and the large amount of numbers, we thought it would be relevant to ask for a waiver on that. I'll certainly take any questions if you guys have them.
Okay. At this point, I will open it up to the board. Any questions? And this would be for either the site plan or the conditional special use permit? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reading through the traffic study that was prepared, I guess it wasn't entirely clear to me if there was formally a signal being proposed on West Hollis Street, the new entrance, or if it was just a possibility in the future. I don't know if the study formally declared that one way or the other. I didn't know if anyone could elaborate on that.
Sure. Yes, there was a traffic study done by the city. Hoyle Tanner reviewed that, provided a memorandum on that as well. There was a signal that was recommended. Hoyle Tanner looked at that and thought that it would be a better recommendation to study that a little bit further, certainly not in the, you know, in the beginning stages of the project, but, you know, usually when a traffic study's done, it's looked at 10 or 20 years in advance, you know, beyond in the future. So that's something that may be in the future, but it looked like there was some more study and that needed to be done, or more research done on that.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Varley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you may have seen that there were comments from Gene Porter regarding the energy source that's gonna be used for the building. I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Sure, and we did have a conversation with Janet, Janice Lamenda, from HKT Architects, who's in charge of, so I'm the civil and the site guy, but there's also mechanical and electrical and things. So I know that there is some ongoing conversations about that. I did see the email from the abutter on that, and I know it's being looked into. I don't know if there's been any, I doubt that there's been any decisions at this point.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to comment? This is Janet Lamenda.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
This is Janet Lamenda, HKT Architects, 24 Wallens Street Charles, Tom Mass. I would just say, in exactly what Bill Davidson said, that we are looking at some alternative sources for energy, and that it's being studied right now. There is no conclusion right now, but we will present that when it is completed.
Okay. All right. Other questions, Mr. Varley?
Not for now, no.
Okay. Other questions by the board? All right, hearing none. I will go ahead and open the hearing to the public. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or have a question of the plan? Go ahead, and I'm starting just for the folks online with the people here in the room, so go ahead and come on up to the microphone and just state your name and address for the record, and let us know your question.
My name is John Hilliard. My address is 847 West Hollis Street. This is the first time I'm seeing the plans, and I'm not quite sure what I'm looking at. I'm seeing, heard that they're gonna change the entrance to the property for the south. The question is, where is that entrance going? When not, is it gonna be a light there? At this point, I feel the city has kind of let us residents down. When they purchased the properties that were across the street some years ago, they don't clean up the trash half the time there, they don't mow the front portion of the property. I look out my front window and I see Jersey barriers and sewer drain cullets all stored over there, so I don't know if any of that's gonna change, but I haven't had a chance to even see what's proposed there, and you're trying to pass a change to the site, and I, you know, I kind of feel like we are blindsided with this.
Okay, well, I'll have the applicant reiterate what the entrance information is and the, as far as the, you know, the materials and stuff like that, I'm sure somebody can speak to that as well, what the impact of that might be. And then regarding the notification, I don't know, planning can kind of give an idea, or somebody, someone can speak to that as well.
Because we got a certified notice a week ago, and I've tried going online to find out what was being proposed. I couldn't find anything online.
Okay.
So I still have no idea what the city is trying to do there, other than I know they're trying to put a 27,500-foot building, they call it office space. Is that strictly what it's gonna be, is office space, or is it gonna be an attached garage to it where the city is parking its city built equipment as well?
Okay, we can ask that question as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition and concerned or have a question of the plan? This includes anybody online at this point. Hands up, Linda, I think.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, I just have a question, and like the gentleman before me, I don't really understand what I'm looking at either, but...
Yeah, can I get your name and address for record, please?
So my name is Elizabeth, and I live on 35 Teak Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So my question is, so my yard abuts the landfill.
Okay.
So what should I expect out of all this? I mean, I know that this, I mean, what I'm hearing is that all of this work is being done on Hollis Street, but what should I expect here, living on Teak Drive, and my yard abuts the landfill? Like, is there something that I should be expecting over on this side of it all, or, I don't know?
Okay, we can have the applicant elaborate on that. Other questions, or? Okay. Anybody else online wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or have a question of the plan?
Yeah, this is Gene Porter, 77 Concord Street. I submitted a comment earlier. My question now is, although I understand you have not made a decision on the heating system, can you confirm that the cost analysis is including not just purchase cost, but also operating cost of whatever heating systems you're evaluating?
Okay. We will ask that question. Anything else, Gene?
No, that's all I have this time.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else online wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or have a question of the plan? Okay, anybody online wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay. All right, so at this point, then, I will go ahead and go back to the applicant. So there's a few questions out there. I took a few notes, hopefully you took a few notes. First off, is just describe maybe a little more, or just reiterate, the location of the building with respect to West Hollis Street, and the, what we expect to see on West Hollis Street?
Sure.
Entrance.
So I took notes as well.
You can put the plan up, if you want the plan up, let...
Yep, that would be fine. The C-6 plan would probably be the best plan again. And I took some notes, too, but if I don't answer everything, just let me know. So on C-6, up in the left-hand corner is the existing Four Hills landfill road where you would come in to the landfill and the transfer station. This is the same road that, where the scale house is. That's in the upper right. The new access for the DPW Office Administration Building is about 300 feet south on West Hollis. So the existing landfill, all the traffic will still stay the same as it does now at the landfill, but the new access point for the, there's not a road there now, or, excuse me, a driveway there now, but there will be, and that's about 300 feet south of the landfill access. That'll come in, and access for the 25,700 square foot building. There's fencing in that location, so that it has a perimeter fence around that. So if you were to come in, the landfill access, before you get to the scale house, on your right, there's a small access that goes up. That's gonna be the area that's gonna be developed for this project, into the right of that. There was a woman that was on T-Drive, I'm not sure where that is, but it sounded like it was off on the backside of the landfill, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, so it's, I'm just trying to, direction, I guess, is it like north, northeast? It's basically the back corner of the landfill, so I don't...
Okay.
It doesn't look like there would be any impact whatsoever.
Yeah, that project, there won't be any, this project won't have any impact on that area, on T-Drive, and the woman that had spoke on that.
Can you speak specifically the distance between West Hollis and the building?
That is, I believe that is just over 500 feet.
So like 500 feet back into the landfill, so?
Can I say something?
Let's have him go through the questions, and I can give you another opportunity.
The next question, I believe, was on the heating system, and having an analysis on both the purchase of the system and then the operating costs, and I believe that that is gonna be looked at for the analysis that Janet's gonna be looking at.
The existing sort of trash and construction materials and things that might be up on West Hollis Street, are you familiar?
Yeah.
Or anybody from the city?
So there is a garage that's on that piece. There's three pieces, there's three residential pieces that, well, there's four pieces, one being the landfill, and then the other three residential pieces that are on West Hollis. And there is some, there's some stockpiled drainage pipe. I think there's maybe some catch basins there. That is planned to be moved. We do have some drainage and things going through there. I don't know if that's the extent of everything they were talking about.
All right. As far as the notification, I'll let the city speak on that part of it. In describing the space, is this office building?
Yes, it's office, it's office building, and then the last, Linda, if you could go to the last couple sheets, there's a rendering of it, and then there's two floor plans that show what the breakdown is of the building footprint. So that's a floor plan there. Most of that is office space. There's some meeting rooms that are in that.
Yeah.
There's a kitchen in there, there's, you know, it's office space.
Yeah, it's not for city vehicle repair, maintenance, storage, or any of that kind of stuff?
Strictly office space, yep.
So office space. Two stories, office space.
Two stories, correct.
So prior to, can you just describe the notification, maybe, from planning?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I'll let the city indicate, yeah, like what was done.
So two weeks before the meeting, we sent out the abutter notifications. They are all by certified mailings. In addition, the information on the card has the city's address and phone number. Plans are available. We are staff Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, so people can come in and look at the plans. And the plans, I believe, are also uploaded to the website, and there is also the signage that is put out there with our phone number and address, so if anybody wants to come in and look at the plans. So there was proper notification, and we did send it out in a timely manner.
Okay. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify with Linda, I just wanted to clarify with Linda, our staff, that that's a statutory requirement, correct?
Correct.
The city meets all statutory requirements with regard to notification.
Actually, it's only, we have to send it out...
Actually, it's only, we have to send it out at least, I think, I believe it's like 10 days, but we actually do send it out about 14 days ahead of time.
Thank you.
You may have Mr. Cummings, the city representative here, just come on up, yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development for the city. This, uh, building project is an internal, uh, project that I'm managing on, on the city's hea-, uh, behalf. Relative to the, uh, neighborhood engagement, I, I just want to make sure it's clear and on the record, and before I go there, I want to, I want to also say that I'd be happy to meet with anyone who has an interest in this project. We can have a one-on-one conversation, we can talk about the various issues, um, and uh, I offer that to, to anyone who's here tonight or in subsequent con- conversations. With that being said, um, there's a body that's been constituted to actually execute this building project. That's called the Joint Board of Infrastructure and Board of Public Works, and that's a, uh, body that is separate from the planning board, that is actually vested with the responsibility of building, uh, developing and building and managing the, the capital project. Those are all public meetings, they started last spring. Prior to that, we started with a design concept, and that was all done with the Board of Public Works, and we actually hosted a community, uh, neighborhood meeting, I'm going to say, in the fall of 2019. And so we, we have tried doing some community engagement on this front. We, we, clearly, it sounds like maybe we came up a little bit short, but I just want to make sure folks know that we did do, uh, our best effort to try to, um, develop a plan, uh, take in community engagement. We've had many conversations with the Ward Alderman, uh, Ward Five Alderman Jetty on this project. So, we, 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 we think we did everything beyond just the statutory obligation that we have. So, thank you.
Okay. Other questions on the rebuttal of the applicant from the board? Let's start with the board, I'll, I will get to you, yeah. Mr. Peterson?
I have a question for the applicant.
Yep.
So, just to be clear, this building is at, an office space and administrative, you want, you're launching site for large equipment like snow plows and front-end loaders and that sort of thing, is that correct?
That's, that is my understanding, that this is an office, uh, an office building. If there was anything different that was to come along, it certainly would have to come back to this, to this planning board.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I will give one more opportunity, since you made your way down here, if you have one more question or something. Yeah, go ahead and come on up, and, and we just have to have it on the record, so... Yeah, and, and, yeah, just state your name and address again, real quick, so...
So, I'm John Hilliard, 847 West Hollis Street.
Yep.
The gentleman there was discussing the site plan and talking about the new entrance, or, or a second entrance, it sounds like.
Yes.
Because it sounds like the primary landfill entrance is staying in place where it is.
Correct.
And then you're going to put another entrance 300 feet further down.
Towards Hollis, essentially, yep.
South, he says, so that would probably end up being right in front of my property.
Good.
I'm about 300 feet up from the current landfill. And that's what I was having a hard time determining from that site plan, because it's the first time I saw the site plan, as to where that entrance was. I'm concerned whether or not you're going to need to put a light in there, that was already discussed about the traffic.
That is being studied, yep.
Yeah. I'm happy with the aspect that there's not going to be heavy equipment there, because I was worried about light pollution and noise from the backup s- signals on those heavy equipment. Where if it's strictly an office building, you're talking about traffic Monday through Friday during the bus, business hours. But I don't know how much additional traffic we're going to see, we already have a lot of traffic on the road, and whether or not they're going to end up putting a light there, and if they do, it's, it sounds like that entrance is right across from my house. I really don't know, they didn't show the existing properties on 847 that are impacted by this new entrance.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, as far as the light goes, it's my understanding, and, uh, they can clarify if they need to. That's, that's being studied, and the answer to that isn't known at this time, just based on the requirements of the road.
Thank you for giving me the chance to at least ask these questions, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, uh, well, at this point, then, we're still in the hearing. Are there any other questions of the applicant by the board? Okay, um, hearing none. Any other questions for the planning staff by the board during the hearing? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, then, and move to the meeting. Okay. So, um, so essentially, we have the, um, new city public works building. Obviously, as a board, we've kind of, most of us have known about this for quite some time. And, uh, you know, the development, as I see it, is, is, is pretty far back off of West Hollis, so it's really not a visible development off of West Hollis, and, um, you know, the entrance is, we've talked about cleaning it up a little bit, which sounds like a, a positive impact on the area. I don't have a feeling, strong feeling either way on the light. I, I feel like that, generally speaking, does need more study before we'd want to accept something that way. I don't know, I know Mr. Ballinger has some experience with that, and wants to comment on that in the meeting here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have no further comments. Um, I, I, I fully trust, um, city staff, um, and, and their consultants to, to analyze that further in the future if, if need be. Um, it just sounds like, uh, it's definitively not being proposed formally as of this evening, so...
Yeah. Other comments by the board? Mr. Peterson?
Uh, yeah, getting back to Mr. Porter's letter to the planning board. So if the Board of Alderman made a recommendation in 2017 to use clean energy sources, and then the newly adopted master plan also wants to use clean energy solutions around the city, uh, I think this should be a stipulation, since, since the applicant couldn't give a, a real answer on that, or a definitive answer, I'd like to make that a stipulation, that we use, uh, clean energy sources, for example, the, um, geothermal or heat pumps or solar to, uh, reduce emissions as much as possible for this new building.
Okay. My own comment on that is, I, I like the idea of maybe we can, uh, start requiring the, the full analysis, but requiring the use without knowing the result of the analysis seems somewhat premature to me, particularly where we have a landfill, um, and the impacts of wells or something in a landfill, in terms of geothermal, might have a, an environmental issue that we have to kind of understand more, so... So I'm not, I'm not sure I could go that far yet on it, but I like the idea of requiring a full analysis that includes both, you know, capital and operational costs and development of a return on investment, at least so that the city and those that actually approved the project itself, because we're really only approving the site plan, to be honest, have that data, you know? That's my two cents, but, Mr. Peterson?
Well, there's the economics of the matter, and then there's the environmental impact of the matter, they don't always necessarily coincide, but today I kept thinking, you know, we have that huge source of methane gas being pumped out of the current landfill, and yet, all of those discussions, international discussions that took place last week in Glasgow is about reducing the use of methane, because it's, uh, much more damage to the, greenhouse gases than regular old carbon dioxide. So, I can't expect this board to make a, a real decision on this matter, but I think it needs to be carefully thought through, and, um, we need to do what we can to reduce the amount of greenhouse gases coming out of this new building.
Mm-hmm. Thanks, Mike. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to speak to just a couple things. One was, one is the, I'm going to get to greenhouse gas in just a sec, but one is the, uh, traffic light. Because of where this site is positioned, nearly all the traffic that leaves the landfill turns right out of the landfill, which isn't as difficult as trying to turn left on a West Hollis Street. So, for that reason, this, you know, the light is being further studied, um, although it meets the warrants, because the lanes are combined, as, as, as outlined in the study, you know, it doesn't, it's probably not proven at this time, and if it was going to be installed, it would probably be installed at the main entrance, not at this new driveway.
All right.
In terms of, uh, the, uh, fossil fuel issue, um, that is something that the committee that, uh, Director Cummings spoke to earlier is looking at, of course, through our costs. Methane from the landfill, um, needs to be dealt with, uh, as a requirement from DES. Currently, the methane is collected through a well system, and that methane, of course, is generated through the decomposition of waste materials in the landfill. That methane is, uh, collected and, um, transferred to an energy, uh, site, an energy generation site, so it's, um, you know, burned in turbines in the, in the landfill, um, through a, through a, an arrangement with a private, uh, entity, um, burned and turned into energy. One of the things that's being looked at, um, and maybe the most likely potential alternate source for heating of the building would be through the waste heat from those generators. So, those generators are running anyway, they're required to run anyway, um, to satisfy the permitting requirements of the landfill, and we would simply be, uh, you know, utilizing waste heat from that process to heat the building, but, um, that comes with a cost, because there's extensive piping network that needs to be established to, uh, route that, uh, you know, heated water, basically, to the building's back, so... I know it is being looked at, it's premature for anybody to, uh, at least for the team to, uh, have reached any conclusion on if that's feasible or not, um, but I believe they are committed to looking at, looking at that option and the costs associated with that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Peterson?
I think Mr. Hudson's comments on the capturing of the methane and using the waste heat from that generating station at the landfill is definitely worth looking into. I'd also like to point out that with the, uh, southern exposure of the roof line of this building, it's like, to me, in my estimation, perfect for capturing solar energy. It's pointed in, pointed in exactly the right direction. Why, it's just, it's orientation with the road. Thanks.
Mr. Barley?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I'm wondering if, um, to address Mr. Peterson's observation, and I, I, I do think it's an important one, mindful of the, you know, the, the limitations that Mr. Hudson identified, if we could have a stipulation that, you know, would confirm that this, that there's going to be this feasibility analysis that's going to be done as part of the project, that would consider, you know, the potential alternative sources and, you know, the economic and environmental considerations, you know, in relation to... So, so it would just say that the condition would be required, that the analysis be done.
That seems like the responsible thing to do.
And it sounds like, you know, following up on Mr. Porter's, um, information, as well as other discussions, that we'd want to make sure that analysis included capital, environmental, and operating...
Right.
...impacts. So, I think there's three specific things that we want to make sure are included in the analysis, so... Okay. Uh, other discussions? From the board?
The, the only, uh, question I have, and I guess this is Mr. Hudson, adding such a stipulation, what in your view would be the, the appropriate, you know, sort of precondition, I mean, or the sort of timing, so, you know, prior to what stage would it be reasonable to say that that, that analysis has to be done?
Um, yeah, I don't know, as I'm in a position really to speak to that, I'm not, I'm not, there's a team of, uh, consultants and the, the other committee that's leading this project. That'd be a question better addressed to Mr. Cummings or, uh, another member of the team.
Yeah, maybe planning. I mean, I think if it was prior to the site plan, that would seem too early.
Right.
I think the next step is building permit, right, so...
At that point?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Cummings, building permit?
Again, for the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. The study's actually going on right now.
Right.
So, uh, we six, I expect some sort of conclusion sometime in December. Uh, I think if you wanted to put a stipulation in saying prior to building permit, we would have it, and you could place it on file. We're going to have to make a decision well before then.
Sure.
And we're going to be making that evaluation probably sometime in December, because we're looking to try to get the building under construction for spring of '22. So, we're close to making this, you know, type of decision, but it's probably something that would come about, um, technically, it, it would come out sometime, probably when we do a value engineering exercise, and we're at 50% construction documents right now, so it's definitely going to happen sometime in the next six weeks or so. That's the best I can tell you.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I think in terms of our own typical milestones, building permit is next after
Correct.
Chair signing the plan, right, so...
Yeah.
So, okay, so we could stick with that. Got it? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, so I think first we have the, uh...
Conditional use permit, yep, yep.
All right, um, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Barley.
Uh, I would make a motion to approve new business project A21-0227, conditional use permit, city of Nashville owner. And that motion would be with a finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, section 190-133F, um, and with that, uh, motion approved having no stipulations.
Okay, so we have that motion, approve the conditional use permit for this application. Do we have a second?
Second?
Second, my Mr. Ballinger. Uh, any further discussion by the board? Mr. Peterson?
Yes, I have further discussion. What about the matter we just talked about with the emissions?
That'll go into this, into the site plan.
That'll be into the site plan?
Yeah.
But not part of what we're voting on right now, correct?
Right, so I, I, my suggestion would be, we add an additional stipulation to the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those as a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Uh, next up, with regard to the site plan, Mr. Barley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I would make a motion to approve new business project A21-0226, site plan, again, city of Nashville owner. And that motion would, uh, be with a finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, section 190-146D, and that will be with a total of 18 stipulations. Uh, and let's see, the first seven of those are waiver requests. Uh, the first from section 19172, regarding building elevations, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, being a waiver of 190-198, regarding maximum parking spaces, that reads is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, for a waiver of 19279H, requiring uses on abutting, showing of uses on, uh, abutting lots or parcels, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number four, being a waiver of request of section 190-279E, requiring location of all permanent monuments, property lines, street line, and lot line, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number five, being a waiver request of 190-279, requiring site plans to be reproduced on a 22-inch by 34-inch format, um, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number six, being a waiver of 190-279F, requiring dimension and square footage of all buildings and structures, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number seven, being a waiver request of 190-279EE, requiring showing existing conditions on and off-site, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations eight through 17, as written in the staff report, and then a new stipulation 18, um, that will read, prior to the issuance of a building permit... the applicant shall have submitted an analysis of the potential for the use of alternative energy sources to support the, the building contemplated in the site plan, which will include the economic components of both purchase and operation and also environmental considerations.
All right, so we have that motion to approve this application, the site plan, with the stipulations, 18 of them as indicated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second first?
Second, Mr. Chair?
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Discussion? Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Yep?
Yeah, so I had a couple of things. On number 10, there's just a couple typos. It's Joe Mandola, street construction engineer, not engineering, and all comments, I guess, in the first line. I guess I had a question for staff on number 15 where financial guarantee is recommended. I don't know what we typically do, but this is a city project. All the work is on a, is on city property. So I don't know how the school, I didn't do my homework. I don't know how the school or other projects have been handled in terms of financial guarantee. But where it's all, all onsite and all city project, I didn't know if that was something we've done.
If it's not required at the time we get ready to do the reconstruction meeting, then we won't have to, we don't have to find an engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So regarding number 10, you, you did have requested amendment on that one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I would, I would, I would request that number 10 be revised to say, in the first line where it says comment, that just be changed to comments. And Joe Mandola, street construction engineer, instead of engineering, just my own grammatical, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and I will amend my motion to include those corrections to stipulation number 10.
Okay. All right, any further comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Thank you very much. So moving on with the agenda. Next up, we have a subdivision and again a site plan. And we will, we will hear those together as well. So first up is new business subdivision plan, this is case A 21-0219. East Otterston Properties owner, Michael Turkot, Turn Cycle Solutions LLC applicant. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed two-lot subdivision. And that property is located at 25 East Otterston Street. We will hear that in conjunction with new business site plan. This is case number A 21-0220. Some weird feedback actually. East Otterston Properties owner, Michael Turkot, Turn Style Solutions. Again, an application and acceptance of proposed site plan to construct a 60 by 80-foot contractor office shop. This property located at 25 East Otterston. So just give us a second, we'll close the door here. For the board, regarding the new business subdivision plan, A 21-0219. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at that application? Want to make a motion as to when it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that the new business project A 21-0219 is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
All right, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Barley for A 21-0219. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Regarding the site plan, A 21-0220. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Barley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that, that case number A 21-0220 is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
All right, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction on A 21-0220. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair?
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, so we have both the subdivision plan and the site plan in jurisdiction.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andrew Pearlman, attorney with Pearlman and Pearlman in Nashua. With me tonight is Mike Turkot, sitting in the audience, lonely and alone. But here on behalf of Turn Cycle Solutions, his company's been running out of East Hall Street for some time. With us tonight by Zoom
Can you hang on one sec, Mr. Pearlman? Is there a way to mute the
Somebody?
Somebody in the audience here that's making the noise? Do we get? Yeah, try that, let's see.
There we go.
All right, let's keep going.
Okay. Just a brief introduction, I'm, I'm almost done. With us by Zoom are the project engineers from Horizon Engineering, Mike Seibert and Ryan Fowler, who I would turn this over to them. We are here for any questions that the board may have. If you want to know about Mike's business, he'll tell you all about it. So if I could have the guys from Horizon take over for now? And then we'll answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So first up, can you describe the subdivision plan, please?
This is Mike Seibert of Horizon's Engineering. I don't know, I'm the engineer on that project, and I don't know if you can hear
Yep.
Ryan.
Yep.
And what about Ryan on the surveying side? Is, is he, can he ever say anything? Probably not.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear Ryan too.
Okay, great. I'll share the screen, and if you want to, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Board, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Ryan Fowler, Horizon's Engineering. Here tonight representing Michael Turkot, Turn Cycle Solutions, as well as the current property owner for 25 East Otterston Street. We're proposing a one-lot subdivision in Nashua, off East Otterston Street and Pond Street. The current lot is a climbing gym and brewery with a vacant building, brick building, which we are looking to subdivide off, off of this property. It meets the current zoning as far as the existing building is concerned with what we are proposing, with the site conditions as proposed.
Okay. You can go ahead and go right into the site plan as well.
Okay. I'll take it from there, Mike Seibert again. So as Ryan said, Turn Cycle Solutions is the owner, and they're proposing to do this subdivision. So this would be their remaining, it's two lots, and then this is the lot we're speaking about right here on the northeast corner. There's an existing brick building right here, which the owner is going to use as a, an office building. This parking area is existing, or this paved area is existing right now. There was a, an old building in this location right here, that's still a pad out there now. As I understand it, there's some shared access and shared parking between the two businesses. And currently, there's existing utilities that come in right in this location right here. For the immediate future, there's a, I think there's a shared condition there, but then this is the proposed site plan. So we'll make, this will be the entrance to this parcel. We'll utilize this existing parking area right here right now, or paved area. The difference between the shading is this is existing pavement, which is not going to be regraded. And the gray or darker gray area is pavement that'll have to be removed and then regraded and repaved. This is the existing building used for office, there's a small connector here.
Could you speak up a little bit? We're not hearing you super well.
This is the existing building right here, used for office space. There's a connector here, and then a 4,900-square-foot new construction storage building right here. The main access, as I said, will be off of East Otterston Street. There's an overhead door here for loading. And then there's also a kind of a loading dock level here for larger vehicles that come in, that can get into this floor level right here. We have, this site is a, is a contaminated site, so we've tried to minimize the excavation on the site and tried to regrade this in a way that we're kind of slightly filling, and then repaving the site where it was paved before. And then as far as the drainage goes, we looked at this site as a redevelopment site, and it turns out that we're, we're changing the impervious surface by only about 3,000 square feet. So the drainage, we developed, you know, a control that would bring the water down to this location, go down around Pond Street, where it goes today, and then kind of off the back south corner here, and then onto Pond Street. There's a very small increase, so we're not proposing any additional drainage structures. It'll just go out into the existing Pond Street and down this gutter area here, which is existing today. And as I said, the utilities, there'll be three new utilities to go to these two buildings, which will disconnect it from this lot. And they're shown right here coming across the property from Pond Street into the new building. I think that covers most everything we're doing. We do have four, between four and six waivers. I don't know if we need to go through those now or later. And I think that's all I have right now. I'll answer any questions from the board.
Can you just walk through the waivers and why you need each one?
Yeah, so we have a, number one is a landscape waiver. We're requesting this waiver due to the minimum amount of plantable ground here. What's existing and staying existing there now, and we're utilizing this area for some snow storage. We'll be able to maintain any existing vegetation that's out there now. So basically, we're not really necessarily changing anything, so we're asking for a waiver from that. The lighting plans, we're asking for a waiver from lighting. There'll be some building-mounted lighting, starting with the, you know, occupancy of this building, utilized as the office, and then some additional lighting on this building. It's mainly used during the daytime for construction business, so we're requesting a waiver from lighting of the parking lot area.
So can you confirm on the lighting, there's, there's only building-mounted lighting? There's no lot lighting?
There's no lot lighting, no, not proposed.
All right. Okay, go ahead.
Let's see. The other waiver we're asking for is the, the width of this curb cut right here exceeds the, the maximum on the regulations. We've actually made it slightly smaller than what it is today. There's a gravel pull-up that comes into this area, and it's kind of a, even a larger access there. We're defining this to the repaved access here. And this is about, approximately about 75 feet wide, which exceeds the, like I said, the regulation. So we're asking for that waiver just on Pond Street. This one is remaining the same. And we're asking for a waiver for having customer entrances on all sides of the, of this new building right here. Basically, this building is going to be occupied and used by the owner for his personal business. So we're, we're not proposing any public access on this Pond Street side at this time. The parking would be right out in front of the building, and there is a public access to this building right here, to the office. So that pretty much summarizes the waivers.
I think there's one with a traffic letter report?
Oh, okay. Yeah, we are, I think we're requesting that a traffic study isn't required or necessary for this site, given the low traffic impact. Basically, what happens is this is a contractor storage building. The materials that are utilized on, on construction sites that the owner is working on will be stored here. And then the workers will come park their cars, get in the company vehicles, load the materials that they need, and then go, go away from this site to a, to the construction site. There would be minimal traffic to and from the site on, you know, during the day for sure.
Okay. I think that's all the waivers that I see. Any further presentation, or are you ready for questions?
I, I think I'm good. I'm, I'm ready for questions.
Okay. So at this point, I'll open up to the board for questions of the applicant. Maybe the only thing I'd ask, maybe this is for the, either Attorney Pearlman or whatever, just can you describe a little bit about the, the, the operation on the site in terms of, you know, just, you know, hours and, you know, expected equipment and stuff? I mean, I understand it's essentially construction mobilization kind of setup and go somewhere else.
My name is Michael Turkot, I'm the owner of Turn Cycle Solutions. My home residence is 305 Woodcrest Court in Manchester. I've operated Turn Cycle Solutions out of Nashua for about 12 years at this time. We're a Main Street location. We had the opportunity to rent at 36th East Otterston Street. And we had land leases, which we have with the existing owner now. So just out of natural evolution of growing our business, we're actually kind of operating in this facility already. It's, we have vans and trucks. Our guys usually start 7:00 coming to the shop. They're in their vehicles and they're gone 7:30, 8:00. And they start to trickle in anywhere from 2:30 to 5:00 at the latest. The relationship, myself and the owner of 25 East Otterston Street is a great reciprocating relationship because our businesses operate on opposite hours. We have
Number of employees?
Yeah, roughly 20 on average, but we hope to be like a lot more than that pretty soon. Young entrepreneur trying to grow a business in this area, so I hope that this is at least the next 10-year plan for me.
Okay. Other questions by the board for the applicant? Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
I'm still not clear. What exactly does your company do?
I'm sorry, I apologize if I didn't answer that. We're a, we have a general contracting division primarily in residential remodeling as the, one of our divisions. And then we also have a insulation division as well too. So the, the primary purpose of the proposed warehouse space would be to be able to buy in a larger quantity. Currently, we're using any means necessary to store our product, which is by way of a Conex box or an 18-wheeler. And we'd like to eliminate that ISOR in that area and have a nice structure to be able to store our equipment safely. We operate, you need a bathroom down in the kitchen, that's one part of our division. We're a provider of the New Hampshire Saves Program. Our company actually probably does about 70% of the volume within the New Hampshire Saves Program. We go into residential homes and we do retrofit insulation is the primary course of our business, sir.
Follow-up?
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
Thanks for that explanation. So when I read the staff report, they talk about the existing site of being a brewery and rock climbing. That's not you guys.
No, sir. That's 25 East Otterston Street, so as a part of this subdivision, we had to do both slides.
So that's 25, and, and you'll be at 35?
I'll be 95. I'll be 9 Pond Street, given to us by the fire department.
Oh, okay. So you two will just code this side by side, like you said, your schedules do not overlap?
No, it's been, I mean, for me personally, running the business I run, I couldn't be happier where I am. I love being downtown. The relationship with Corey, the existing owner, has been phenomenal. I mean, we help each other out whenever we need something. I hope to stay right where I am. It's, my staff is very local to this area, so it would be very disruptive for us to have to move to another location, especially given the economic times right now. I can't afford to lose anyone right now, and we're very happy with the staff that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? I can stay here.
Any other questions by the board?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again for the record, Andy Pearlman. Just one thing to clarify, Mike Seibert alluded to this. We will be having a cross-access easement with 25 East Otterston and 9 Pond to allow for shared access, to allow for snow plowing, drainage easements, so what Mike just said is very true. These guys are working well together, and the lawyers are not going to screw it up. Thank you.
No other questions by the board, I'll go ahead and open up to, did you have one other thing?
Just one last thing.
Sure.
The proposed stipulations and the two staff memos are fine with us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hearing no other questions by the board, I'll go ahead and open up to, I mean, there's nobody here in the audience, so, but anybody online wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan, or have a question? You can go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for record. You don't see anybody, do you? No? Okay. All right, and then anybody online wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay. I'll give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant on either the plan or the subdivision while we're in the hearing. All right, hearing none, I will go ahead and close the hearing, so. So we have in front of us a, obviously two items here, subdivision plan and the site plan. Seems like a pretty well-thought-out, you know, continued use and of the site. The subdivision seems pretty straightforward, the easements seem to be reasonable and in place, so I don't have any particular questions on my end. Anybody have any items they want to discuss during the meeting here?
Mr. Hudson? Just in terms of the list of stipulations for both items, there are updated comments from Engineer Tom McCroy, so those are dated November 3rd.
November 3rd? Okay. Okay. Other, anybody else have any comments during the meeting? If not, I would entertain a motion. We would need to start with the subdivision. So regarding the subdivision, anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business subdivision plan, project 821-0219, finding that it does meet the requirements of subdivision NRO 190-138G, subject to seven conditions. First condition is a waiver of 190-282B9 with respect to physical features. The stipulation shall read, is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent. Stipulation number two, as written in the staff report. Stipulation three, as written in the staff report, shall be amended to indicate date of November 3rd, 2021. Stipulations four through seven, as indicated in the staff report.
Okay. So we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve this subdivision plan, with the stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Anybody like to make a motion regarding the site plan? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve a new business site plan, case 821-220, 25 East Otterston Street, finding that it does meet the requirements of site plan NRO 190-146D, subject to 15 conditions, the first six of which concern waiver request. Stipulation number one, waiver request of NRO 190-279EE with respect to adjacent parcels, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation two, waiver request with respect to 190-279P regarding landscaping plan, shall read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent. Stipulation number three, a waiver of 190-279N with respect to a lighting plan, shall read is granted, will not be contrary. Stipulation number four, request of a waiver of 190-209A1 with respect to driveway width, shall read is granted, will not be contrary. Stipulation number five, request of a waiver of 190-2790 regarding a traffic letter, shall read is granted, will not be contrary. Stipulation number six, the request for a waiver of NRO 190-272E with respect to entrances on all facades facing a street, shall read is granted, will not be contrary. Stipulations seven and eight, as written in the staff report. Stipulation nine, as written in the staff report, but amended to read November 3rd, Stipulations 10 through 15, as indicated in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve this site plan with the 15 stipulations as indicated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thanks. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, yeah, thank you. Next up, we have a review of tentative agenda to determine any proposals of regional impact. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at their packet and the tentative agenda and want to make a motion regarding this? Trying to get to it. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact, as indicated on the case list of the technical review meeting of October 18th, 2021.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger, there are no items of regional impact. Do we have a second? Second by, Mr. Barley? Okay, seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. I think we are at the end of our agenda. I don't know if we have any discussion items, staff, or anything coming up. The next meeting is the 18th, is that? November 18th? Anything else? What's that? Okay. So if we have no other further discussion items, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so we have that motion, we don't need a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes, we are adjourned at 8:19.